Call our meeting to order. Those who are able to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do a have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions of 3.1.1 Karen Blom and 3.1.2 first reading of activities and book. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Randy?
Second.
Brad or Katie?
I'll meet.
Oh, Brad or Katie?
Go ahead.
I heard Mercy first.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Those all in favor of approval of the agenda with the additions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those showing the same sign? Hearing none, motion passes. Four visitors?
Uh, one Savannah.
You say you want to go? Okay. I don't know what I'm doing.
There you go.
Excellent, babe. So, I just wanted to bring the attention that I'm concerned from some of the third grade students that are current, third grade students going into fourth grade. There's talk about possibly bringing them down to three classrooms instead of four. My daughter is one of those who's kind of on the fine line as far as needing help, not needing help. And so I feel it's important to me to have the smaller classes because otherwise I feel she's gonna get pushed off to the side a little more than she should. When you look at the three classes, they're tight together. You got paras in there helping other students. Kinda gets distracting for those young ones to learn. Like I said, being on that fine line. Some say she needs help, some say she don't. You know, so if your teacher kinda gives her extra, you bring those classroom sizes up to 25 or more students and it's gonna be really hard for her to get that learning that she needs. And I know she's not the only student. There are many students on that fine line that need any extra help. I guess I would feel that our school district would really appreciate staying with the four classes for that grade division.
Okay?
That's all we really have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, move on to the consent agenda of 5.1 through 5.10. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion?
I would like to discuss, I don't know, an item on there at like 5.2.4. Now I can just, okay. I was just really surprised at the almost 6% increase over the next two years on that contract just due to the fact that she has no prior experience. And I feel like as a new person coming on, she should probably have a one-year contract and be evaluated at that point and then we can see what we need to do, especially with all the budget cuts that we're talking about. I feel like that's a pretty big increase.
I'd just say it's an at-will employee, so she has no right to any position. And we can reduce that position if you want or make sense it's an at-will employee. So if there are any concerns, I think they could be addressed.
The increase in something that would just mirror what the current contract is, right?
That one was up, so we would've been a negotiation item for what we did. So if she would've stayed, we would've had, we'd have been negotiating this year with her contract. That was 2% each year over three years.
It came, well, yeah, it comes out to be about 5.6% over the three-year contract.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further?
I'll just bring up that a couple of the individuals on here that we're hiring have a lot of experience and so I'm excited to have them join the Pipestone Area School District, so.
We do have a lot of, I mean, we have our summer custodian crew, our summer technology crew, our elementary summer school, our middle school summer school. We've got, so there's a lot of people we're hiring for the summer. So there are a lot there. I would also like to say that, like to recognize Jamie Jewell who is resigning and moving on. She's got an opportunity to go into higher education. She's going to be a special ed teacher of, special ed teachers. And I, you know, she's been with the district for a while and been a head volleyball coach and really done a lot with the proms and different things. I don't know, Corey, if you'd like to say anything, but that's another one in there.
Yeah, I would echo that. She's very involved and just did a great job with our students and representing our school and our community. So happy for her, but sad that she's gone.
Do we have numbers for the summer school students yet?
No.
So we have no idea how many students?
No. Last year we had about 50 at Hill and close to 20 at Brown. After targeted services.
Well, we had 10. Would we still use all these teachers?
No.
Okay.
We plan for what we had because it, each year it's gotten bigger, so.
And that's if you're going to build them now and then?
Yep.
You plan to use them?
Yes.
And then, you know, you see a lot of titles in here. ESY is Extended School Year. That's a special education. Targeted Services, that, we get actually funding from the state for targeted services. So we, these students are counted in attendance and we get revenues. Credit Recovery is a high school piece where kids are making up some credits that we have. What was the, let's see, there was a STEM?
Yeah. It's a, if you want me to talk about it now, I will. That was a, that's a new, I'm just calling it a STEM camp. It's one week for our middle school seventh and eighth grade students and then one week for high school oriented students. Mr. Dulos, I had talked to him about that and we're gonna do some robotic-based coding and we're getting materials and training from Texas Instruments and it connects with our current graphing calculators that Mrs. Thompson uses a lot in, you know, in her geometry, a little bit in algebra too. So we kinda like that use of what we have plus adding a little more to be, to put together some activities that are really coding and robotic-based.
And I'd like to thank Pipestone United Way for the $750 donation to save funds to school across the dark times. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion now? Second, correct? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, same sign?
Aye.
Katie, got that? Okay, motion passes, six one. Administrative reports, 6.1.1. Jackie, review of budget for the day.
Sit down. It looks good and I did a few budget transfers among object code, but that was about it. And there's no payroll in this one because we were paid today, so therefore you really can't compare last year's percentage to this year's, this month's percentage. This payroll was in last May's and wasn't in this May's. So. And that looked fine.
Anybody got any questions with Jackie? Any questions with Jackie? Hearing none, move on to 6.1.2.2. Corey?
Hey. So I'll just follow up on the summer program. You could see that we have a lot of programming going on and I will say we are getting, I know we've had 10 applicants, applicants, but 10 students indicate they wanna be a part of our summer program already and that is trying to get ahead of and having teachers in place ahead of time, so I'm not scrambling and basing it off of what we've had in the past. So that's how we came to that and trying to provide quality programming for them in the summer. The other thing is it's graduation week, so our seniors are done tomorrow. We'll have a little send-off about 3 o'clock and then then we kinda wrap up our stuff with them on Friday morning, but you're all welcome to attend. At 8:30 we start our senior recognition program. We'll do a little graduation practice after that. We'll get over to the elementaries and do some fun walking around, that kinda thing, celebrate our seniors and in those ways. So we have that and then again, you're all welcome to come to our graduation at 2 o'clock on Sunday. So that's the main gist of my week.
Any board members who are helping with diplomas?
Yes.
Official duties.
You gotta be able to shake a hand and stand in front of a lot of people.
Yeah. It's exciting to do. I've done it a couple times. It is, it's pretty awesome to do it.
It's fun.
Yeah.
It's just a lot of fun. That's all I have unless you have questions.
Okay, anybody got questions for Corey? Okay, we'll move on to 6.1.3. Tony?
Hi. I don't have a lot either. Basically just wrapping up the school year. We're doing some field trips with our kiddos. We have Hill Olympics on Friday, weather permitting, and that'll start in the afternoon at 12:45, so you're welcome for that. And then we did, we're supposed to have our color run last week, but because of the weather, we changed it to the 29th of May. So we're gonna do it then, I believe it starts at 1:30. So you're also welcome to that at Brown. So, yeah. Nothing too crazy.
Anybody got questions for Tony? We'll move on to 6.1.4. Melanie?
Good evening, everyone. We are fully completed with MCA testing. We are now in the mode of getting ready for our professional development days for our staff. June 3rd, we're bringing all of our staff back. We will have Martina Wagner presenting to all of our pre-K-12 certified staff and our paraprofessionals on English Language Learner 101 as well as an introduction to English Language Learner Best Practices and Strategies. Then we will have time to deal with a little technology, cleaning out some servers and transitioning some data to other places. Our, our paraprofessionals will be doing some PD during the month of June on their own using a program called Infinitec. Our school district signed on with Infinitec this school year to allow us to provide opportunities for professional development for our staff at a very low cost to our district and staff can do it on their own time. To, they have everything put together, pulled together for staffs to re-licensure. It's pretty easy to get in there. It is a system that takes a little bit to think because there are so many pieces of video and data in it. But our paraprofessionals are going to be our first campaign that we are going to create where, think of it like a Google Classroom where all of our paras will be the students and they will be provided with a learning path and they will be working on PD around building relationships, working together with teachers. Also a 10-series learning on managing escalating behavior. So those are all things that our paras are right in line to do and deal with every day that they're on the job. We also are looking at, one of the sessions is on understanding how the brain and ASD works with instruction and how it can accelerate behaviors. And then just meeting the needs of students with ASD and ensuring that they are HIPAA compliant and all the things that, you know, would normally start the year. We do plan to use this in the fall as an onboarding for staff and paras for things like bloodborne pathogens and stuff like that. But our paras will have the month of June to complete, there are probably about 15 courses here and they range in time amount from about 15 minutes to an hour and a half. And they will then review it, take a quiz and then be able to print a certification. Plus I will be able to see when they've completed, what they've completed, so that we can ensure that our paras have done the work that we need them to do for the summer. We're doing this work for them this summer because of our snow days. This is how they're making up their snow days. And then June 4th, 5th, and 6th, our staff will be brought in in teams, either grade levels or content areas. Mostly middle school and high school are by content areas. And they will be meeting with me to review edits that they need to make on their common course guides and grade level checklists. The elementary grades will also be working on their iPad app lists and a couple other little things that we had hoped to do during PLC but didn't get to because they were canceled. So we have a full first week in June here at school and I hope that our staff are able, our staff need to have their course guides and grade level checklists all edited and completed before August 15th. So our staff do have two days that they have of time to work on them included in our makeup days. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I have a concern, a couple of different parents that talked to me that had gotten papers as far as summer school, you know, that their child needed to go to summer school and they're straight A students. So, you know, and my question as too is how are these students that are straight A students failing these tests or not meeting requirements on these tests to that degree?
That's what we're working on with standards alignment. Okay. When our standards are aligned and our teachers are teaching the standards to the intended level of rigor and they are grading based upon the level of rigor that is in the standards, there will not be a discrepancy between what the grade is in their class that they're earning and what their score is on the MCA test. Because right now that's not aligned.
Right. I mean, I think it's confusing for people because they're...
Very confusing for people. And it's gonna take time for all this, all this work and planning that we're doing to actually put into, focus in the classroom, actually be done and then for us to see the benefit in our students' achievement. It's not something that I can just turn a switch and say, "All right, here we go."
We're doing a lot of work right now on the what we're teaching. The next level is how do we assess? So that we, we know that kids are getting it and learning and how do we communicate that back? How do our grades reflect? I mean, are we grading based on the standards? So there's a number of phases that we're gonna be working on in this area, but what you bring up is...
Completely relevant and why I do what I do.
Yep. It shouldn't be that way.
Any other questions for Melanie? More? Hearing none, we'll move on to 6.2, school board members. Anybody have anything you wish to speak about?
We haven't had a, haven't had a committee meeting yet.
Nope, nope. The only thing I'm...
They'll be starting again, though.
I'm looking forward to Tuesday.
Yeah.
For having our tour of buildings on Tuesday.
The core planning group is gonna be going to Sibley East and to Mankato to look at some elementary schools. So kind of in that second meeting of core planning group, second of four meetings that that group will have.
How many people have signed up to hit from that group?
Right now, I wanna say there's about 12, 13, so a pretty good turnout. Most people, Katie and Jeff are going from the board and then we've got our administrators. And I think we have, I think one of the parents can't make it, but two can. And then we have our three-year, four teachers. Should be a good group, good delegation going. Sibley East is a two-year-old school. And then the Mankato school is probably less than five years old.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Move on to 6.3, superintendent. Any superintendent evaluation?
Our enrollment is the highest it's been all year, 1156. We had a few more move in in May. I think we were kinda shocked that we had movement in April and a couple more here in May. Our enrollment in September was 1151 and our enrollment today is 1156. So we're five above what we started the year at, which is always a good sign. Finish the year above where we're at. The second thing is you have the superintendent evaluation each year. It's important that the board and myself go through our goals and what kinda job I'm doing and what you'd like to see from me. So Jeff and I met, we have similar form than what we've used in the past. It's got our goals, objectives. We can give a rating of one to four and then if there's any comments that you have, I guess the question I have is there anything that you would like added on this evaluation to give me more feedback on? And the second thing is, is we've done this electronically so you can fill it out and then it all gets compiled. And the process would then be that Jeff would have that, compile it and meet with me and we would go over the evaluation. And then next month, we would close the board meeting and we would talk, the whole board and myself would go over the evaluation if there was anything that we could talk about. So that's kinda the process. I think we're looking to have this completed by June 15, I believe, because the board meeting is June 24th. So then Jeff and I would meet the next week and then we're gonna get all this done, so.
Have we, have we received it yet electronically?
Nope. We'll kinda wait if there's anything you wanna add or...
Got it.
And then we'll put it in a form.
Making sure I didn't miss it.
Yeah, Deb's a master at this. She's really gotten it down.
One is good, four is good.
Well, one is unsatisfactory, four is...
I put all ones?
Then, then we got some more. I got some more.
Okay. Higher's the better.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully a few people counteract you.
I always gotta have one guy.
Right.
But if you have anything you want changed or added to it, just write it on the sheet now.
Or call the avenue. I think we'd like to get, we'd like to work on this this week and get this out to you sometime here in the near future so that you have a good couple weeks to put it in and do what you wanna do. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, just let me know or, and then we'll get that on there, so. Otherwise that's, we're winding down the school year and that's all I got.
Okay. Move on to the new, there is no old business, number seven. Move on to new business, number eight. 8.1, approved treasurer's report for May 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad? Is there any discussion?
Jackie, maybe you want, I mean, we kinda started with Min Trust and PMA and started to work our money a little bit. It's, I don't think we've...
Have you noticed there's another bank account on the bottom? One more to reconcile. So, and they have, they're, they're the ones who are investing our money and they, next month you'll see a couple CDs that they've invested in with those interest rates, but they didn't do it in May, they just, or in April, they did it in May. So.
Okay.
Other than that, I've closed Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund now, so all the state money that was going there is now going to Min Trust. Any questions?
So do you anticipate putting the bond money there?
Bond money, there's already, there's already an account set up in Min Trust for the bond money, yes. There's already a separate account set up. Top of the game there, Jeff.
Confident bear.
I need to talk to them about if we're gonna have a separate checking account. You know what I mean? I gotta figure out those details yet. Or what's the best way? I need to talk to some other people that have done it to see what is the best way of doing it, but...
So when it's in that trust, how tied up is it, you know, for sure? I mean, is it accessible at any point in time or...
I think there's different regulations of...
They will work, they will work, this is where Kraus Anderson will have a timeline and they will have all this mapped out of when we will need money. So they will invest some of the money in a one-year fund, some of it'll be in a six-month fund, some will be in a three-month fund. I mean, they'll have varying, so they'll kinda know through the two years what we need and when we'll need it. So there might be some money that's invested for a year and a half. So, but they, they help us out with all that, so basically it's...
I gave them all our cash flow information before they even did this, like when I received my payments and when I paid the majority of the bills, so that I have all that information. And with this first investment, they're being conservative probably just to make sure that I gave them the correct information and we're just kinda playing it conservative right now. But then once we get rolling, they'll probably feel more comfortable investing things out for a longer term.
Well, that's where our construction manager, Kraus Anderson, comes into play. They, they work with when bills get paid and have a timeline for things. It's usually pretty active, so.
Any more questions, Jackie? Any more questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the treasurer's report for May of 2019, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 8.2, approved payment of regular monthly bills. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Brad?
Second.
Randy? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving payment of regular monthly bills, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 8.3, approved 2019, 2020 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Katie, second?
Second.
Brad? Any discussion?
This is a yearly thing for our activities to be part of the high school league. Just gotta do it every year.
Any further discussion? And more? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the 2019, 2020 membership to Minnesota State High School League, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 8.4, letter of retirement from Scott Rudy, high school social studies teacher. Do I have a motion? So moved. Lance, I'll second it. Any discussion?
I'd just like, Mr. Rudy has taught for the Pipestone Area School District for 35 years, dedicated service to the students. He's a coach and teacher. Big decision to finally retire, so best wishes to him. And I don't know, Corey, if you...
Yeah, Mr. Rudy, very, very quality person. Real outstanding teacher. Will be missed and just because, I mean, those of you who've had students go through, you kinda know.
I've been in Mr. Rudy's class.
Yeah, some of you have been through there.
Yes, yes, he's awesome.
So just sad to see him go, but happy for him on that end too. And just really enjoyed working with him over the years and the quality that he brought to... to the classroom every day.
Well, I got to say, if I read his retirement letter correctly, his whole teaching tenure was in Pipestone.
He was brand new when he came here.
That's awesome. Spend that long time, raise your family and stay in one spot. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Scott Rudy's retirement letter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point five, approval of lease with the National Guard Armory. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Randy and Katie, any discussion?
We leased the armory for basically bad weather, shelter for bus, bus stop area. There's no cost to the lease, it's just an agreement in case something were to happen, we're liable and we'll cover whatever happens with our students. On mornings or whenever they had bus times.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the lease of the National Guard Armory, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point six, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget reductions.
To begin, I think we should review a little bit of where we and how we got here to look at where the reductions come from. What I've got slowly fading in here, coming in on the upfront is, this is a copy of our general fund statement from our last audit from the fiscal year eighteen. And the highlighted area down here shows that we deficit spent three hundred and thirty thousand dollars last year. So that's spending more than you have. We then look at the budget that was accepted for this year, that was accepted last June. This year, we are expected to deficit spend eight hundred and ninety thousand. Now, that number is a little bit softer as the year goes on. We've had some revenue increases in some special ed areas. We believe that number is more like six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're going to deficit spend. We will know next November when the audit report comes in of where this fiscal year ended up. I give you a five-year trend of where our budget and our fund balances have been. You can see over the last five years, our fund balance is healthy. We've been even above what our policy has stated for a few years. We did go back in it with there. You can see that we deficit spent three hundred and thirty thousand and this year we were anticipating deficit spending. So we knew something was needed to, we know that where we're at with our, with our budget. In January, you passed a resolution asking or directing me to look at budget adjustments in curriculum programs and staff for next year. So the Finance Budget Committee got together in January. We worked with, they kind of looked over administration. They said we would like to see what four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand and six hundred thousand in reductions would look like. We did meet again, the Finance Budget Committee, and they recommended we go with five hundred thousand dollars in reductions. And so that has been presented, what we've come up with has been presented to the Finance Budget Committee and it looks, this is what the recommendations were from the administrative team and also the Finance Budget Committee, is, was recommended this come to the full board for review. I'll start and go through what our reductions are. The first three are classroom FTEs. This is where we would reduce a section, kindergarten, fourth grade and sixth grade. We anticipate class sizes to be in kindergarten still around nineteen, fourth grade around twenty-five, and sixth grade around twenty-seven. We also, we achieve, the achievement and integration funds that we're eligible for, we're looking to add a position there that will be covered by the grant, but a third of it will also be paid by Edgerton, so we can actually see that twenty-three thousand dollar savings in that position there. We have an interventionist format that will be paid through for the grant, so that, that is just a zero. And then we have a retirement that we anticipate seeing about thirty-five thousand dollars in savings. We're restructuring the tech assistant, we're reducing that position and reassigning those duties to media centers and other paras support. And we have a custodian who's retiring that we are going to restructure with a housekeeper. That position would work just on student days and then have a few extended days prior to school and then after school, but we would save about fifteen thousand. These are staffing reductions that we're looking at for next year. And one of the things that, we, we're not laying off anybody. These are all done through attrition, through people leaving and retirements and those types of things, so the next item on your agenda is not to lay off anybody. We, no, no employee is losing their job because of these reductions. This accounts for about three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of our reductions. I should remind you that we're very heavily, our budget is basically eighty percent staff, so this is fifty-two percent of our reductions comes through staffing. The remaining reductions are efficiencies. We're looking at our supplies through the elementary and secondary and our maintenance budgets. We reduce about eighty thousand in supplies. Technology, we, equipment, we still are going to keep up with replacing about two hundred and fifty Chrome books this year, but we are reducing our technology equipment budget a hundred and sixty-three thousand. We got a new copier contract that saved us twenty-one thousand. And that construction trades class, we're looking at that to be self-sustaining. We've been contributing forty thousand to Midwest and, well, to Midwest for the cost of the instructor, we're reducing that to twenty thousand for next year. This brings our total reductions to five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Like I said, the administrative team was directed to come up with five hundred thousand. This is even a little bit above that, but we feel that this is, the timing of this was good. And like we said, one of the hardest things we go through is, you know, we've got good young teachers and we don't want to lose any of them and we're, we're not. So we're reassigning a few people in some areas, but overall, this is what we've come up with for reductions for next year.
And there's a retirement in the sixth grade? I guess I don't know where the, understand where the...
There was a retirement in fourth grade.
So is Mr. Rudy's retirement figured into this?
That would be this one retirement here. We anticipate hiring a fairly young teacher. We've had a few other teachers leave that, that we can reassign some, some things there. And we also know that there might be some further staff that may leave between now and July one that we may, can add another reduction here, but the Finance Budget Committee's, we had other things that we considered, we looked through a number of things, I think, I guess they can attest to, they felt like we were thorough enough, but there are reasons why we selected kindergarten, fourth and sixth grade rather than other grade levels. We could have reduced further, but we felt like that would be where we would start losing staff. And right now, with five hundred thousand dollar target, we feel like we're in the ballpark there. I'm not going to tell you that we're not going to have to probably look at making reductions again next year. The legislature now is talking about two percent. Two percent for us is about a hundred and eighty thousand? No?
Hundred and fifty-eight.
Hundred and sixty thousand? I just got to be a little bit more than Jackie all the time. That's a hundred and sixty thousand in new revenue. That's probably maybe a one percent increase to our teaching staff on their negotiations, so it isn't going to go very far, so. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Well, our recommendation was a half a million.
Right.
With, we wanted to see what the four, five and six looked like.
I guess the fourth grade, I mean, fourth grade concerns me. They're small rooms, I've been in them with twenty-two students and there's not a lot of extra room. You throw in twenty-three more kids, three, four more kids, if we get a few more kids coming in on enrollment, where do you put them? Where do you put, and then there's paras in there, there's teachers in there. I mean, if you're staying inside for, because of weather, all these kids are in this little room all day long or they're going to the gym where, I've been in the gym, I mean, with sixteen kids and it's a small gym for that many kids. I just feel like twenty-five, unless there's a different model at how we're going to teach them, where they're moving throughout different classes, you know, there maybe, I mean, I don't know, I look at maybe if you team taught, where you moved them within those four classrooms and then the fourth classroom was in gym or music or, you know, I don't know. I don't know what that looks like or, I'm not an educator, but I'm just, I, I just feel like twenty-five kids with paras and teachers is way too many kids in those buildings.
How many students in the current seventh grade? A hundred?
That's our next, that's our largest class, like there's a hundred and three, a hundred and five right in there.
When they were in fourth grade, how many sections of fourth grade did we have?
Pretty sure four.
We've had four sections, so. We've had, twenty-five is not unusual. When we had larger class sizes, they did have that many students in those rooms, so.
So how high has the enrollment gotten, you know, in third grade? This year's current third grade?
Seventy-five.
Throughout the year?
It's seventy-five now, but it's...
I mean, looking through here, it's the last three, four years, I mean, it's started out at...
I thought it started out like...
Ninety-one.
Yeah.
Ninety-one to seventy, ninety-seven, seventy-three to seventy-four. So, I mean, it's, it's one area where, you know, our, our test scores are struggling down there. And our goal has been to spend the money down there, catch them early.
My other question is, is how many students are in the Jasper preschool? Where do we sit with that? I mean, can those students come to Pipestone instead and not have that laser teacher there?
We've already been discussing that because of the fact that the enrollment down there is very low this year.
Well, then I think that would be a place to not have that teacher down there and bring them up here. I mean, it's all, it's great to have it there, but if it's not cost effective...
No, we've talked about that already.
Next year, we're slated to have one student there.
Yeah.
We're not going to offer three ones.
Yeah. So where do those reduce, I mean, where, how much does that save us?
That teacher is a savings, she just comes over.
No, she'll just come here because we're having high enrollment here in Pipestone, so she'll teach here in the mornings.
And that's a community of funding anyway.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I kind of agree, you know, after, after a lot of talk and, and, you know, what our goals are with these kids. I, I don't know if you jeopardize taking those younger teachers away. There's no teachers going away.
Well, with, well, I mean, not taking them away, but I mean, going to that larger class size.
Well, I think Kevin made a point that...
Four classes, four classes.
In the past, we've had twenty-five in a class. I did some research today and there's a cooperative out of the Twin Cities area, Metro Exu, and they do an annual class size study across thirty-eight different metro cities or districts, and the average class size for twenty-five, or for a fourth grade is twenty-five kids. And there shouldn't be a difference really in metro or here because we're all teaching the same standards and trying to accomplish the same thing. And so with the current environment, I guess with the legislature and only getting two and two on the funding going on, we've got a, I mean, eighty percent of our budget is staff.
Right.
Well...
I agree, but if, if we're doing it just to save money and in the end we end up...
Dropping test scores.
Our test scores don't come up like we've spent the money to increase them. Then you've thrown good money out of the bag.
But I think we have to trust our administration, that's why they're in the positions that they're in to make those decisions that they make. We're not educators and, you know, we didn't pass a levy, so somewhere our budget shows that we need to make some cuts and they've really sat down and talked about it and really laid out several options for us. This is what we thought would be best following their lead. We have to trust their judgment.
We also, our goal, our original goal was half a million, not six hundred. I mean, we wanted to see what six hundred looked like and how we would get there. But our original goal was five hundred.
I think the cards just fell that way. I mean, it wasn't intentional to get to that number, it was just, that's just kind of where it fell.
And you're looking at possible budget cuts next year as well.
Is there any kind of statute that states, like puts a limit at how many, how many students a teacher can have at a certain grade level or no?
So that's a local decision.
And then looking at the second grade group that's coming up right behind this third grade group with eighty-seven, that's going to increase those class sizes to about twenty-nine then, so then...
So you have the opportunity to move teachers around if you need to. So if we have three sections of fourth grade this year, maybe next year it'll be three sections somewhere else. So you can adjust that with your teachers, you just move your teachers around to adjust to your enrollment of that class. Is how that works.
We're not saying fourth grade will be three sections forever.
Right, all five, right.
When the, next year, we can't, can't put...
We looked at the smallest classes, class sizes, and that's kind of how we came up with, you know. And there's research out there that, you know, it's not about class size, it's about your destruction.
Sure. I was just thinking because the, the class size is kind of very grade to grade, so. And I guess when we've done our testing, has that level, that grade level been high, low, normal? Our fourth grade's pretty average. There are, in our reading, they tend to be one of our higher grade levels. In our math, they fall right in with everyone else. But again, echoing what Ms. Bartman said, class size does not influence academic achievement. It's who is in front of them and how well they instruct them. It's how they use their time and that's what we're working to improve, what they're being taught and how they're being taught.
Okay. Any more questions?
I'd just say that we've had, I mean, for fourth grade this year, there's twenty-two, twenty-three.
High is twenty-two.
Fourth grade? We don't feel that twenty-five is unacceptable.
I feel like unacceptable and a good fit are two different things though. I mean, I, I do, you know, I just do, I feel like...
Finance committee recommended, this to the board, you're, we're deficit spending six hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, that's a million dollars in the last two years. So you don't have to cut anything, you can keep spending money.
That's not what I...
Our operating levies haven't passed.
That's not what I meant.
I'm just laying it out for you. It's your decision.
If we add...
We laid it out for you.
No matter what, if we add sections in either hill or brown, we don't have the space, so somebody's going to get kicked out of the building. So we added sections in kindergarten and fourth grade, right? And then the ECSE got pushed out into the Lutheran church. So we got to think about all the kids, not just...
We only added kindergarten because of numbers, so.
Yeah.
We added the six kindergarten sections this year because we were anticipating a hundred and fifteen, that never came to be. Next year, we're looking at just around a hundred, so we're just redo, taking back that kindergarten section. The others have all been four sections, so. We also have two other grade levels that are at seventy-five that we could have recommended also, but they were in transition areas of second grade and fifth grade, but it pushed comes to shove, we would have, we would have recommended that too.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion on eight point six to approve the budget reductions for two thousand nineteen, twenty-two?
So moved.
Scotty? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the two thousand nineteen, twenty-two budget reduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Three opposed. Motion passes.
Number three, I'm sorry, Brad.
Number three.
And you as well?
Yes. Motion passes four, three. Eight point seven, first reading of activities canceled.
There are two changes that Clay is recommending for the handbook. They were on page ten and it has to do with attendance. Sorry, I should add that up, page ten. And what the activities director is recommending is that instead of, students must be in school for the entire afternoon and on time to the beginning of fifth hour to participate that day, and he wants to change that to the start of second hour.
So all they have to do is be here for the beginning of the hour, be gone for the rest of the day.
Start of second, start of second hour. Oh, now?
No, no, no. What he was recommending, all they have to do is show up for the start of that hour.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Be gone for the rest of the day.
That's what it looks like, yeah. You could read it that way.
No, that's not right. No, that's not right.
Must be in school at the start of second hour to participate, okay.
Yeah. So, I'm there at the start of second hour.
Through the rest of the day, through the day.
They're not saying that I have to be here the whole day.
Baker, read it like that.
The kids will pick that out, you know.
Right, well.
Should you say, students must be in school by the start of the second hour?
That's why we have first reading, second.
Yeah.
I have to start the second hour, be here all day. Through the end of the seventh, oh, we're...
Through the end of the day.
At the start of the second hour, through the end of the seventh hour. And there's no... Good job, Jay.
I would have called now.
You're on top.
Second is on page fifteen, and it has to do with adding incompletes currently. The academic eligibility was about failures, and they would like to add incompletes or failures, so if you have an incomplete at the end of a term, you would also have, is that?
Do we still have incompletes with ICU?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, and it's, it's a matter of, sometimes at the end of a marking period, it's an incomplete, and then after a week, if the grade hasn't changed and the teacher hasn't indicated it, then it becomes an IF, incomplete fail. So, we just wanted to clarify the language in there, to say either incomplete or perfect.
So, that is, these are on the report card, they're not daily.
Correct.
So, you would have...
These are your quarter grades.
Yeah, so if they have incompletes or Fs through the whole quarter, and it all shows up on your report card, you could still participate.
Technically, yeah. It's a, it's a eligibility approach focused on end of quarter, and that's the way Mr. Anderson established it, and that's how he carries it out.
In Minnesota State High School Leagues, their requirement is you must be making adequate progress towards graduation. So, if you had that standard, you basically wouldn't have any...
You could justify anything.
Most school, local districts have higher standards than one of the Minnesota State High School Leagues, so. Some check it weekly, this is a quarter credit-based system. At the conclusion, that's when you serve your...
It's a fairly clean break with defined timeframes.
Fourth quarter carries over?
Yes.
So, that's the start of, so how do you...
That's my question.
How do you become eligible again?
Right.
Yeah, how do you become eligible?
You have to wait till the end of the next quarter to become eligible again, then?
No, it's two weeks.
If you read on, it's in, if you read on, it talks about that, I believe.
He, Mr. Anderson administers it. He uses a two-week timeframe that students have to, to get it up to become eligible. If a student doesn't change the, the grade, then it does, they're, they're still ineligible until...
Until they get it up.
Right.
And a D minus will do it, right?
D minus will do it.
Or turning in your assignments.
So, is this just limited to participation in the events? You would do full practices?
Right, you would be, you would be allowed to practice, you're not allowed to compete.
So, are they not, are they allowed to dress for the team?
That, I believe, is a coach's decision. In terms of dress, I believe they attend, but I don't normally get into that when it's grade-related. It's usually a, an activities violation that, deal with those.
Says they can't dress, coach determines if they go or not.
On the front end, it's lacking. On the back end, it gives them the required. So, if they can grade up grade in two weeks, they're being, they're doing fine, and after that, they can be back to half till the end of the quarter again.
Well, I'll look at it this way. You have, if you can get them to the passing level, that's a win.
Yep.
Quarter break happens at different times. So, it's not, it's not perfect, because if you think about it, Mr. Anderson put this in as, as he was the head football coach, when do they get hit? It'd be right during playoff time. So, if you look at it cross-country, is that, are they going to get hit? Probably not unless they failed the previous fourth quarter heading into the season. So, be, based on some of those cutoffs, I mean, you could look at it and say it's lacking, but they are defined cutoffs, and I would say we have seen actually pretty good results with this. So, it is having its intended, the intended expectation, so overall, I would say we're on the right track.
That was going to be my question. How much, how much I would have used it?
Well, again, I don't see the numbers. I know Mr. Anderson talks to the students and, and follows his protocol on it. I, I don't know how to give you a number on that.
But we have used it.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, every quarter.
We can't make it so tough that we don't have students competing, because it's very good for the students.
Right. The goal is to have them participating and competing.
It's a very good thing, and I don't want to make it to the point where they can't, can't compete because of putting up rope.
And that's what Mr. Anderson said when he presented it, to change it, when he changed it to this, that this encourages kids in a more positive way to get their grade back so they can compete to where we had it before. They were kind of throwing the towel, like, I'll never get to be able to compete, I'm, I don't know that I can even get there, so this encourages kids really to...
Yeah, because if you go under making adequate progress towards graduation, it's almost lenient, 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 then death blow, and you're done, so.
So, this is non-action, first reading, so, and I think if we get the one change a little bit...
Sure.
It's like an hour.
Yep. Any other discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mark, do you second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, motion passes.